Down.
Might get done.
We're going live.
You did?
Yeah.
Oh, I saw there.
Did I?
All right, I'd like to open a public hearing on Local Law Number Two or 2023. The Local Law entitled Adjusting the Weighted Vote of the Green County Legislature. At this time, I would ask you to read this in a public hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Notice of here party. That the county legislature of the county of Green on the 13th day of February 2023, Local Law Introduction Number Two of 2023, and a local law entitled A Local Law Adjusting the Weighted Vote of the Green County Legislature. It is enacted by the county legislature of the county of Green as follows. Summary of proposed Local Law Number Two of 2023. To this Local Law, the county of Green proposed to adjust the weighted vote of the individual members of the county's legislature to reflect the results of the 2020 United States Federal Census. The calculation shall be utilized in the total votes of the county legislature to be the 2020 United States Federal Census. And exclusive of those persons incarcerated in state correctional institutions and facilities located within the county. The weighted voting calculation shall be based upon the 2022 Green County Census calculation order compared to Green County by the Research Foundation for the State University of New York Independent Center of Civil Rights in September 14, 2022. The weighted vote recalculation according to the VANSAP Power Index for the recommended adjustment of weighted votes. The full text of this proposed Local Law Number Two of 2023 is available for review in the Office of the Clerk of the Green County Legislature's speech 408411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, 12414, and on the Green County website www.discovergreen.com. Notice is granted in the county legislature of the county's legislature to conduct a public hearing on the proposed said Local Law on the 15th day of March 2023 at 6:15 PM in the legislative chambers, County Office Building, 411 Main Street, Fourth Court, Catskill, New York, at which time all persons who are interested in the subject matter thereof will be heard to serve in the same stated program since 2023. Amy Call, Chigalo, acting for Green County Legislature.
Okay, I meet on you. On purpose of this public hearing, there's no here comments from the public regarding Local Law Number Two of 2023, a local law entitled A Local Law, excuse me, Adjusting the Weighted Vote of the Green County Legislature. If there's anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to Local Law Number Two of 2023, a local law entitled A Local Law Adjusting the Weighted Vote of the Green County Legislature, I would just ask that you raise your hand to be recognized. If you stand, please state your name for the record, and with that, we'll begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to Local Law Number Two of 2023, a local law entitled A Local Law Adjusting the Weighted Vote of the Green County Legislature? Ryan is back in the room. I know you had some questions early on. Did you get sufficient answers?
I got everything answered thanks to the legislature chair.
Thank you.
And his infinite wisdom.
That's right. I've got $20 for you. Again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to Local Law Number Two of 2023, a local law entitled A Local Law Adjusting the Weighted Vote of the Green County Legislature? No one, hearing no one. Clear, the public hearing closed and not more regulations.
Players and our coaches.
It's all a list.
Yeah.
All right. I won't bite. I am definitely not standing there.
All right. Thanks, Greg.
All right, well, we invited you here to honor you and say thank you and let you know how proud of you that we are of all of you for your accomplishments this season. So on behalf of our entire legislature of Green County, we have a commendation for you, Catskill High School Girls' Varsity Basketball Team, in honor of their 2022-2023 Petroni Conference Championship and their 2022-2023 Section Two Finals Appearance. Whereas 12 student athletes from the Catskill High School Girls' Varsity Basketball Team were 2022-2023 Petroni Conference Champions. Janaye Brantley, Senior, Aleah Shook, Senior, Kaylee Neary, Senior, Adrian Walters, Senior, Emily Allen, Junior, Gillian Devlin, Junior, Stevie Arp, Junior, Janaya Pomelis, Junior, Alessia Salerno, Sophomore, Ava Edmund, Sophomore, Tazia Green, Sophomore, and Natalia DiCaprio, Freshman. And whereas the team outscored and won against Greenville Spartans, sorry Greenville, during the February 13, 2023 championship game, awarding them the title of the 2022-2023 Petroni Conference Champions, which advanced them to the Class B semifinals. And whereas in the Class B semifinals, Catskill won against Ichabod Crane to advance to the Class B title game on Thursday, March 2, 2023, at Hudson Valley Community College. And whereas the Catskill High School Girls' Varsity Basketball Team went into the Class B title game with an incredible record of 23 wins and one loss, taking second place against Albany Academy. And whereas during the entire 2022-2023 basketball season, these students not only became the 2022-2023 Petroni Conference Champions, but they also gave everything they had in them to give to their fellow teammates, to their coaches, to their school, and to the community that came out to support them. And whereas of the 12 players, the following were named as 2022-2023 Petroni Conference Girls' Basketball All-Stars. Janaye Brantley, MVP, and Senior Team. Ava Edmund, First Team. Aleah Shook, Second Team. Kaylee Neary, Senior Team. And Aleah Shook, Senior Team. And whereas we recognize the coaches, head coach Christian Quinn and assistant coach Ian Quinn, for their outstanding training, guidance, and motivation. Now therefore, we, the members of the Green County Legislature, on behalf of all the residents of Green County, do hereby proudly and publicly commend the Catskill High School Girls' Varsity Basketball Team in honor of their 2022-2023 Petroni Conference Championship and their 2022-2023 Section Two Finals Appearance. And further, for reaching this level of excellence through sheer hard work, dedication, and an unyielding commitment to excellence, we convey to them the respect, admiration, and congratulations they so well deserve, along with our sincere good wishes for continued success in all of their future endeavors dated March 15, 2023, signed the Green County Legislature by our chairman, Patrick S. Linger. Congratulations, ladies.
I think so, yeah.
And before we take a group picture, I have one more certificate of recognition, and this goes to Chris Quinn, in honor of being awarded 2022-2023 Petroni Conference Girls' Basketball All-Stars Coach of the Year. Congratulations. Do you have to say anything?
I would like to say thank you. We very much appreciate you guys recognizing the dedication for the last four months. Hard workers and great kids.
May Green County.
Let the Sliders to come up and look, and get a group picture.
We'll stand up in the back, Matt.
Patty, you gotta move in a little bit, too, Jake.
All right, everybody look forward.
Ready? We're gonna take a couple pictures. Here's the first one. All right, a couple more. All right, thank you.
All right. Parents, Mary, a couple? Anybody's parents want to grab one where you're? All right, congratulations.
For like three minutes.
They can stay for the rest of the meeting. Really, if you want to stay for the meeting.
Make a social study.
All right, everybody. Was that on YouTube?
It went off, Tom.
Yep. Right.
What'd you do?
That's what I've been doing.
I call regular meeting number three for the year 2023 to order and ask everyone to rise for a moment. Do I mean the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple proclamations to do about tonight. I need to refresh. The first one is going to be for Human Services if I could get Karen and Buller as well as Stephanie and. Thrown between two roads or something. I can say that, right? All right, Green County Legislature proclamation. The Green County Department of Human Services Global Volunteer Month. Whereas every April, Global Volunteer Month is a time to recognize volunteers and people who actively support their communities. And whereas the week of April 16 through the April 22, 2023, is recognized throughout the United States as National Volunteer Week, powered by Points of Light as an opportunity to recognize the impact of volunteer service and the power of volunteers to tackle society's greatest challenges and build stronger communities and be a force that transforms the world. Each year, we shine a light on the people and causes that inspire us to serve, recognizing and thanking volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voice to make a difference in their communities. And whereas, National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 and has grown exponentially each year, with thousands of volunteer projects and special events scheduled throughout each week. Today, as people strive to lead lives that reflect their values, the expression of civic life has evolved, and doing good comes in many forms, and we recognize and celebrate them all. And whereas, National Volunteer Week is part of Global Volunteer Month. And whereas, the Green County Department of Human Services relies upon volunteers to AmeriCorps seniors to provide and assist with vital services for the elderly residents of Green County. And whereas, these volunteers are crucial to the department's aging services, including home-delivered meals and transportation for medical appointments. And whereas, volunteerism empowers individuals to find their purpose, take their passion, and turn it into meaningful change by solving our most persistent problems and create stronger communities with a more just society. And whereas, it has long been a tradition for the county's AmeriCorps seniors volunteers to perform work of a high quality and to brighten the lives of others while making Green County a better place to live, in which to live, by serving in community locations. And whereas, these county volunteers give freely of their energy, time, ability, and experience. Now therefore, we, the members of the Green County Legislature, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Green County Department of Human Services Global Volunteer Month. And further, we recognize and thank many volunteers within Green County who lend their time, talent, and voice to meet the critical needs of our communities. With great pleasure, we honor all of our county volunteers and convey the sincere gratitude and appreciation of our citizens for the dedicated, selfless, and compassionate efforts of these volunteers. Dated March 15, 2023, the Green County Legislature, signed by Patrick S. Linger, Chairman.
I just wanted to bring you an update of our accomplishments for 2022. We had 189 volunteers who contributed a total of 10,654 hours, which according to the independent sector has a value of $29.95 per hour for a total of $319,087.30. Our volunteers made Green County a better place for seniors to live. We had 124 volunteers who delivered homebound, did homebound meals delivery, and they delivered 90,432 meals to 633 residents. 20 homebound, excuse me, homebound medical transportation volunteers provided 1,463 rides to medical appointments for 120 clients. Forty-one of the clients who received meals were veterans. Five of the clients who received rides were veterans, and 17 of the RSVP volunteers who served in 2022 were veterans. We are always in need of new veterans, so please pass the word. They can contact me, and I did send this to all of you, I believe, yesterday. Probably got it Monday. And thank you.
Thank you. The second proclamation is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is keep in mind through 15. I don't believe we have anybody from dispatch center here. Expected it was the date that they had yesterday. They were a little busy and successful, and just through that storm very widely across the counties. Later, hold on if you would. Sir, by more than a week, too. I mean, I know they're, I know them for a week, but they're busy 24/7, you know, every day of the year. So, the Green County Legislature proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9 through the 15, 2023. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical service. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, emergency medical providers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality, accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Green County 911 Center. And whereas, the public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, the public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters and emergency medical providers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators at Green County 911 Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Green County Legislature do hereby proclaim the week of April 9 through April 15, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Green County. And further, we recognize and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Dated March 15, 2023, the Green County Legislature, signed Patrick S. Linger, Chairman. That's another department that we hear every month, reports of all volumes, and just keep going up and up and up, and thousands from 156, and we do it with professionalism. And that's a department that, their operations have just changed so significantly. I've been at that 35 years, so I was there 35 years ago, and it's so much different now that they can do that they have. Pretty incredible what they can have done. Right. There's no objections nor corrections to the minutes of the special legislature meeting number one, as well as the previous meeting. They get a motion and a second to dispense with committee reports. What next? Or, what next is more? Everybody has a copy of the meeting correspondence in your pocket, and that.
Motion to adopt Local Law Number Two of 2023, Adjusting the Weighted Vote of the Green County Legislature. Can I get a motion?
Mark this. Stay warm. Hang on, favor. The local law.
Legislature Lewis.
Yes.
Legislature Lucas.
Yes.
Legislature Rivera.
Yes.
Legislature Martin H.
Yes.
Legislature Opelmo.
Yes.
Legislature Dorrington.
Yes.
Legislature Tru.
Yes.
Legislature Coleman.
Yes.
Legislature Buich.
Aye.
Legislature Davis.
Aye.
Legislature Handel.
Aye.
Aye.
Legislator Hobart.
Aye.
Legislator Lake.
Aye.
And Chairman Lee.
Aye.
Chairman, we have ten thousand yeses and fewer than no's. Resolution number ninety-six dash twenty-three, authorization to pay claims moved by legislator Martinus and seconded by legislators Hobart and Lennon.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution number ninety-seven dash twenty-three, authorization to pay claims at high rate moved by legislator Hobart and seconded by legislator Lennon.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution ninety-eight dash twenty-three, resolution asking Governor Hokel and New York State Public Service Commission to dismiss NYSE G's great hike request and to correct the billing problems before the hikes are considered. Moved by legislator Davis and seconded by.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution number ninety-nine dash twenty-three, resolution urging action by New York State legislators to advocate on behalf of SUNY Community Colleges funding to community colleges in the state budget. Moved by legislator Lemon and seconded by legislator Opelov.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I want to second that also, please.
That's Gary and seconded by legislator.
Resolution one hundred dash twenty-three, authorizing agreement between Green County and the Columbia Green Community College Foundation and authorizing payment moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislator Opelov.
Second that also. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution one hundred dash twenty-three, authorizing application to New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services for alternatives to incarceration funding. Moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislator Davis.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution one hundred two dash twenty-three, authorizing advertisement for bids for paying service moved by legislator Martinus and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one hundred three dash twenty-three, authorizing advertisement for bids, purchase of materials moved by legislator Buich and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one hundred four dash twenty-three, authorizing the county highway solid waste superintendent to advertise for the replacement of the Boomer Road Bridge over Gooseberry Creek, Town of Hunter, ten one seven six one point two five, moved by legislator Handel and seconded by legislator Buich.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one hundred five dash twenty-three, authorizing the county highway solid waste superintendent to advertise for the replacement of the Timberlake Road over Broad Street, Hollis Street Bridge, Town of Lexington, ten one seven six one point two one, moved by legislator Dorrington, seconded by legislator Hobart.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution one hundred six dash twenty-three, authorizing the county highway solid waste superintendent to advertise for the replacement of the county group eighty-three Culver and pedestrian bridge, Town of Hunter, ten one seven six zero point two three, moved by legislator Buich and seconded by legislator Handel.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one hundred seven dash twenty-three, authorizing amendment number one necessary for the completion of the design phase for the replacement of the county group eighty-three Culver and pedestrian bridge, Town of Hunter, ten one seven six zero point two three, moved by legislator Hobart and seconded by legislator Handel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one hundred eight dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance, a hundred percent of the federal state margin salary program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriate funds. Moved by legislator Martinus and seconded by legislator Buich.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one hundred nine dash twenty-three, authorizing purchase of two-tubting utility trailer moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one hundred ten dash twenty-three, authorizing purchase of one new twenty-twenty-three excavator moved by legislator Buich and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one hundred eleven dash twenty-three, authorizing expansion of services Jersey Construction Group, Catskill Recycling Center Construction Project moved by legislator Dorrington and seconded by Chairman Linger.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one hundred twelve dash twenty-three, authorizing agreement Green County Department of Human Services Aging and Heartstone Care LLC for companion care. Moved by legislator Tru and seconded by legislator Handel.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one hundred thirteen dash twenty-three, authorizing agreement Green County Department of Human Services and Heartstone Care LLC for social adult aid program. Moved by legislator Handel and seconded by legislator Tru.
Second.
Second by legislator Lennon. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution one hundred fourteen dash twenty-three, amending resolution number one eighty-three dash twenty-one, Green County Public Health Department and Health Research Incorporated Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity for Infectious Diseases, E L C, Enhanced Detection and Expansion for Coronavirus COVID-19. Moved by legislator Coleman and seconded by legislator Handel.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Davis, Rivera, Buich? Everybody? Or opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one fifteen dash twenty-three, authorizing agreement and budget amendment Green County Public Health Department, Green County New York Medical Reserve Corps, and the National Association of County and City Health Officials, N A C C H O. Moved by Chairman Linger and seconded by legislator Lucas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one sixteen dash twenty-three, authorizing grant application Green County Department of General Justice Assistance, B J A, moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislator Lucas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one seventeen dash twenty-three, authorizing out-of-state travel Green County Department of Human Services Aging, AmeriCorps seniors, Rui de Porte, or major of volunteer services. Moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator Handel.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one eighteen dash twenty-three, amending resolution number two dash twenty-three, reappointing historian, moved by legislator Moore and seconded by legislator Handel.
Second.
Second. I'd like to second, Mark Hens.
Yeah, me too.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one nineteen dash twenty-three, appointing Green County coroner Brianna Lennon, moved by legislator Tru and seconded by legislators Lucas and Rivera.
Opelov.
Martinus also second from former Opelov. Martinus?
Upstaying.
An extension coming from Lennon. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? One extension. That's Gary.
If I could interrupt, she actually wanted to be here this evening, but she got called out on a.
Coroner's call?
Yeah. Well, not a coroner's call, but a call for her own, her own.
Do you have a home call?
Her home call. But she was planning to be here tonight.
Thanks, man.
Sorry, I forgot to mention.
Resolution one twenty dash twenty-three, appointing members to the Green County Fire and Drive Board twenty-twenty-three, moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator Davis.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one twenty-one dash twenty-three, appointing additional member to the Green County Hazmat Team. Moved by legislator Davis and seconded by legislator Lennon.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one twenty-two dash twenty-three, reappointing, appointing members Green County Traffic Safety Board. Moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary.
Resolution one twenty-three dash twenty-three, establish capital project number one thirty-seven, Green County Camera Systems. Moved by legislator Martinus and seconded by legislator Hobart and Lennon.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one twenty-four dash twenty-three, budget amendment Green County Community Services Board, H C S Columbia University Grant. Moved by legislator Davis and seconded by legislator Tru.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one twenty-five dash twenty-three, budget amendment Green County Family Planning and New York State Department of Health's Comprehensive Families Planning Programs, Electronic Health Records Board. Moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Gary.
Resolution one twenty-six dash twenty-three, budget amendment Green County Public Health Department, Defense Initiative Initiative Board, two ten. Moved by legislator Davis and seconded by Chairman Linger.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Gary. The pair of resolutions that we have tonight. Remind everybody that has Feinberg Grants, the effects will be available Friday after two P M. I'd like to make sure you're aware that Saturday is slay the lights birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And on Monday at eleven A M, we will have a group coming through the county office building of old-school kids to learn about the legislative process and what we do. Seventeen kids.
Seven, ten children and ten adults.
They're coming through, so if anybody's around at eleven o'clock on Monday morning, want to stop in. Give them a little, a little incentive. This is a very diverse group of students. It comes from about kindergarteners through seniors, so it's a pretty diverse group.
I have lunch at eleven fifteen, so I'll come around my lunch. It should be a pretty decent, about two groups, and we'll just swap them in the middle.
But do these, the students, do these kids go to an actual non-public school-type Montessori, or are they?
Homeschool, homeschool.
Homeschool. All separately homeschool?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, right. A group around the county that's all homeschool.
Right.
So we're going to do like a lock election, we're going to have them, the tourism markets will have them. Yeah.
And the service dot K nine here for, it's kind of a general, some government services, what we do, how we do it. They're actually very interested in voting. We were able to lock up a ballot, so they'll be, take the little pen, you know, fill in the circle, send it to the machine, and that kind of stuff, so they're pretty excited about that.
I'll be getting about five-dollar bills, how many do we make? You said seventeen?
Seventeen, show me anymore.
I think I can get Constitution into one of them.
Oh.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So that's going on Monday. Tuesday. Yes. I don't know how to vote, okay, so.
Tuesday's.
Twenty-first?
Yeah.
Twenty-first?
Yeah.
We don't have any business.
Sean, you did say that you had those state of emergencies.
Schools.
Went out to the school district.
So you got a free day off?
Yeah.
Courtesy of Governor Hokel? Bet you love that, man.
We don't want to lose state funding.
Then we have two separate tournaments to do tonight.
Sure.
And I'll call on the one that's Martinus.
Chairman. Christian DiStefano, Suppana Rich. Sixty-six of Cooksack, he died February twentieth, twenty-three, at home. Born in Catskill, daughter Paul DiStefano, and the late Paul and Serpene Carl. Patty was a graduate of Catskill Central Schools, class of seventy-five. She was a graduate of Columbia Green Community College with associate degree in individual studies. Tired from the Green County Department of Social Service, too. While had been working for D M for Department of Border Vehicle, Doorill. Official to her father, Paul DiStefano, believed she survived by her husband Wayne, her son Michael Henigan, granddaughter Paige Henigan, and grandson Ryan Albert Williamsville, D R. Daughter Brianna, Kevin Ingles of Charlestown, Mass. Stepdaughter Jade Suppana Rich, Sawardies, many relatives and friends. Patty, prior daughter-in-law, mine, quite special. She walked into a room and it would light up. She was, she loved life to the fullest at home. She was quite a lady. So she'll be joining her mother, her brother Sherwood, my son Jeff. Probably will all be there someday, so God bless Patty. She's, she's home, she won't suffer anymore. Mary Jo, do you have anything? Mary Jo was a dear friend of Patty's for many years. Thank you.
Get a second from the board of that? I have a second from legislator Lennon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, legislator Tru and myself would like to close the meeting in memory of a former legislator from Catskill Carroll District, Ray Setmire, eighty-eight years old, long-term area resident of Carroll. Passed away on February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Ray was born on October twenty-fourth, nineteen thirty-four, in Catskill, New York, and is the son of the late John W. and Winford Dolores Costello Setmire. Besides his parents, he is preceded by his loving wife for forty-three years, Judith Cochran Setmire, brothers John Junior and Thomas Setmire. Survivors include his three children, Brian Setmire, Bonnie Setmire, Galvin Derrick, and Bruce Setmire Kevin, and his three grandsons, Riker, Luke, and Egan Galvin. Sister-in-law Dorothy Setmire, and the second love of his life, Virginia Ginger Patterson.
During his lifetime, Ray attended Carroll Central School and Albany Business College. He operated the R. J. Setmire Real Estate and Insurance Agency in Carroll, New York, for forty-seven years. During that time, he was a member and past president of Green County Board of Realtors, Green County Association of Insurance Agents, and the Carroll Rotary Club. Ray was also a member of the Green County Republican Committee and served on the Green County. Put your phone. Sorry. Green County Legislature also raised their twenty years on the Green County Town Board, or on the Carroll Town Board. Ray loved to travel. He and Ginger have visited over fifty countries. Relatives and family and friends were cordially invited to attend the calling hours at Richard's funeral home at twenty-nine Broad Street in Carroll, New York on Thursday, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, from four P M. to seven P M. Funeral services were held on Friday, February twenty-fourth, at two thousand and twenty-three, at ten o'clock A M. at the funeral home, with Pastor Victor Nelson officiating. In lieu of flower contributions and Ray's memory, they were made to be out to the Resurrection Lutheran Church, P O Box five sixty-three, Carroll, New York, one two four one three. they were made to be out to the Resurrection Lutheran Church, P O Box five sixty-three, Carroll, New York, one two four one three. The interment was at the family plot of the Casskill Town Cemetery in Casskill, New York. Condolences and memories have been made at Richard's Funeral Home dot net. I just want to finally add that, um, my mother and Ray went to school together. Of their graduating class from Carroll, there are four of them left. So they have lived very long fruitful lives, and Ray was very, very well-known in the community. And he, it'll be missed.
And in the county.
Yes.
In the Green County.
Thank you.
Second from the board?
Second.
Thank you. Nothing else?
All righty.